And we.
That's our agency, housing authority and successor housing agencies special meeting. They want to say September twenty seven, twenty twenty three, the time is six P M. Uh, welcome those joining us here on Zoom as well as those on Facebook. We'll call the meeting for order. Six oh one. And if I can get a real call.
Okay, your planners commissioners are Chair Roberto Cruz. Vice Chair Josie Perez Aguilera.
Here.
Commissioner Sergio Diaz.
Here.
Commissioner Sandy Cortez.
Present.
City council members. Mayor Ana Velazquez.
Absolutely.
Mayor Potam Ben Jimenez Junior.
Here.
Councilmember Alejandro Chavez.
Here.
Councilmember Maria Corlejo.
Yeah.
Councilmember Fernando Cabrera.
Here.
Do we have a form?
Uh, instead of it all saying please for the public delegates. Ready again.
I need just to be the flag on the United States of America. And to the Republican Party, one of the same, one of the issues under our legal law. With the justice law.
Next order of business is the public comment. Section visitor. We're working the public here. There anyone on Zoom? Other comments?
Yeah.
Close the public comment section, move on to business. Uh, B one, the decision on the twenty twenty three to twenty thirty one housing element public review draft. And.
Yeah. But yeah, and I think I can make a brief overview and then we're going to turn it over to the consultants. Um, as you, I know you've attended sessions about the housing element, because the housing element is a very important um element of the general plan. Um, because of how uh the state requires uh the city completed in certain cycles. Um, this will run ahead of our general plan process. It's the sixth cycle of the housing element and we're working together with a bunch of other cities in our region. Um, the document is is very important and there are more requirements this time around than in the past years. And um cities that aren't um do not have a housing element um and lose some of their uh land use authority and also not be eligible for specific grants around housing. So it's a very important document to make sure that they're updating um in a timely manner. Um. We did get a little bit of a late start um on the on the housing element. So we will uh we won't be completely adopted by December, but we are working towards submitting our um our first attempt at the housing element to H T D probably by October six. So this is a really important meeting and we're I'm here to collect your feedback feedback on, I think, a very solid draft that Placeworks um helped us put together. Um, and with that, I just want to thank you for your time and energy. Um, and um any input, we really want want your input um to make it very specific, it's a solid desk. Um, there are, as Amy will explain, there are certain things we have to do, they're they're not negotiable, that's the requirement um of the the housing element, but really there's a lot of flexibility in thinking about housing programs and in the way that we can support the development of the housing, especially affordable housing. And that helped turn it over to me. Thank you.
Thank you, Megan. Um, I mean, since I work with Placeworks, I think I've been at meetings with most of you already, but nice to see everyone. And I'm going to go through a brief presentation and then we'll be focusing mostly on your input tonight. So we're going to talk about um the programs, which is kind of the implementation piece of the housing element document, and then touch on our schedule for what we envision for the rest of the process. So, thank you. So, yeah, there are forty programs in this draft. And as Megan said, some of them are in response to requirements from the state. Some of them are carried over uh from your existing housing element because they are um still important. And also we have some new programs, so I'm gonna kind of go into those details. Uh, but again, a lot of the changes are in response to either input we've received so far or uh the state law at this time. So next slide. So we want to talk at first about the programs that are directly in response to state law. Some of it is new state law, some of it has been on the books for a little while. Um, so program one point two point one is called the land inventory program. And this is basically where we look for enough sites to address the regional housing needs allocation or the RENA number, which we've talked about at the first meeting on the housing element. But that's the number that the state provides to every city and county to uh zone enough land for to make an opportunity for housing. And then there is a law that requires that over the eight years, where we're we're, you know, after the housing element is adopted and the city is implementing it, that enough land is available still. So either there are projects that get built and those address that number or there is still other land available if the projects haven't gotten built um to to have those opportunities. Uh, the next program, six point one point one addresses fair housing. This is a big part of the housing element this time. There is a new state law, you know, since the last housing element, Assembly Bill six eight six that requires a new section and new analysis of the housing element. So you've seen that in the draft. And we have um this program, which has a lot of pieces to it uh to address fair housing uh issues that have been identified in the analysis. And then the third program on this slide, one point two point four is to require that certain zoning be in place for sites that have been in the housing element for a couple of cycles, so for, you know, about fifteen years. If they haven't developed yet, the state wants some facilitation of the opportunity on those sites. Next slide. So uh the other two programs to highlight that are in response to state law, the first one, five point one point one is the zoning amendments program. This is a a list of changes that are needed to the zoning. Uh, some of these are almost complete already uh because the city has been working on the zoning amendments for a couple of years. Uh, once they are, if they do become uh incorporated into the code, then we can note that in the housing element. And that a lot of them have to do with allowing certain types of housing uses to, you know, make sure that different types of housing for different folks um is an option. And then last on this page or this slide, program five point one five. This is to implement a couple of state laws that are fairly new that require streamlined processing for projects that meet certain criteria and they include affordable units. And that's S B thirty five and S B three thirty. So the housing out, the state wants a program in the housing element to address those laws. Next slide, please. So now I'll just kind of go over the three big groups that we talked about on the first slide, which is the the programs that are continuing from the existing housing element. And there are eleven of those listed here. And then we also have some programs that are that a version of them was in the existing housing element, but they've been modified. And then we have new programs. So the programs to address state law also appear in these lists. So we wanted to kind of highlight those. And then you can see here there are quite a few different programs. I'm not going to read every single one. I would be happy to talk about them um during the discussion. And I've got the document here, you guys all have the document, so we can get into the details. Uh, the modified programs, there are fourteen of those, go to the next slide. And again, you know, dealing with certain groups who live in the city. This is, a lot of this is in response to state law. Um, they call them special needs groups that are sometimes have more housing needs, like farm workers, single parent households, seniors. Uh, next slide, please. And then we have a couple more programs that are on groups like that. There are things like rehabilitation programs where it's not just looking at new housing, but actually making sure that there are opportunities and hopefully funding to uh keep existing housing up to code and and a nice place for someone to live. So that's just a couple of examples from that list. Uh, next slide. So the new programs, there are fourteen, and some of these are on the same list uh that we went over in terms of state law. So the ones that are that we didn't talk about already, I want to talk about a little bit more, since these are the things that are new that you haven't seen in your existing housing element. So accessory dwelling units. You, the city has already been allowing accessory dwelling units and and approving them for quite a few years. Um, the state wants to see more effort put towards this type of unit. They see it as a real positive option um in areas that aren't necessarily as dense, but where you could put a an extra dwelling unit. Uh, so they want a program in the housing element to encourage the building of accessory dwelling units. And that's what that one's about. Um, there's a program to look into land trust and housing trust funds. This one was in response to some of the input that we heard from the community and from your group. Um, the next one, city owned sites, this is something that is newer in state law. Also, it's not a requirement under state law to include city owned sites, but when they are part of the list of sites in the housing element, uh, the state wants to know what the plan is to develop those sites. And they ask for more information than privately owned sites, which is also based on state law. So that that program talks about those types of sites. Uh, we have a home buyer education and opportunities program. So another, you know, like the accessory dwelling unit program, this one provides um outreach and education. And I, I think this one also came out of a lot of the input we heard where um a lot of folks felt like people in the community didn't know about opportunities for housing and how to go about pursuing those opportunities. And the last one on this slide, first time home buyer funding. Um, this is a uh funding program that um hopefully can be available during the planning period to um bridge that gap for first time home buyers. And then the next slide. The mortgage credit certificate program, this is another funding um type of program. It's uh in coordination with other agencies to help folks get into housing. Uh, the next two, two programs after that, place based revitalization and environmental quality. These are both partly in response to the fair housing analysis and also um when we get into more of the environmental justice topic as part of the rest of the general plan. This is kind of a related program, so making sure that the uh there are resources, amenities, recreational opportunities and uh hopefully other things to improve environmental quality uh in including transportation related improvements that all will, you know, support the housing, you know, the housing opportunities and the quality of life. The next one, housing choice vouchers, this is what some of you might know as section eight vouchers. They're also called housing choice vouchers. So this is a voucher that somebody who is very low income or their household is very low income can qualify for, and it can pay part of the rent in a rental uh through the government. The next program, the lot consolidation and lot splits program. This is another program to support the sites that have been been identified for housing. So to uh have the city be supportive of and maybe possible help facilitate bringing smaller lots into a bigger project so that um there can be an opportunity to develop. And then similarly, if there are really large lots, um maybe divide those up for housing, which I think has already happened quite a bit here. Um, and then the fees program, this is just to make sure that the fees aren't acting as a constraint um on housing development. And then the last one is to monitor what they call non governmental constraints. And these are constraints to housing development that are not within the city's control, like cost of construction, cost of land. So keeping an eye on that and, you know, working within the region, working here in the community to see if there's anything to be done to kind of mitigate some of those challenges. Okay, next slide. So just to, um, before we get into the discussion, our schedule here, September twenty seventh, we're here tonight. And as Megan mentioned, the the hope is to submit the draft um with any revisions that are identified before uh it goes up to the state. And then they have ninety days to review this first draft. It usually take that long, but if we're lucky, we'll get the opportunity to work with our reviewers at the state and uh get some of their feedback during that ninety days. And at the end of that time, though, there will be a letter that comes to the city identifying comments from the state. And then we expect to probably need to revise the draft again and work with them one more time, hopefully, to receive their approval, which is required. And then right now, this is all kind of based on how things play out with this first ninety day review. Um, but we would expect to come back to you um to both bodies to have adoption hearings in the spring. And then there's one more submittal to the state to certify the document after that for sixty days. So I think that's the last slide. Yes. Thank you.
Yeah. Yes. Then we can.
All right.
And if you wanted to before um you open it for you have a comment. Yeah, yeah, that's fine. You can open it from public comment.
Do they even have any clarifying questions or maybe? Okay, uh, this time, pretend you open up the public comment. Question. Anyone for the public? Anyone on Zoom?
Yeah.
Yes.
Um. Hi, um, my name is Laura Aguilera. Um. I was hoping there'd be more people from the community here. Um, but I just wanted to address the the need for low income housing. Um, so far the progress that's been happening here in town has been only for the above average incomers. And so I will, you know, wish we placed more of those efforts into the lower, lower income brackets. Um. Based on like the the regional housing needs assessment. Right, that's cool. Every eight years, um, we've made no progress. So we have an F in every category except above moderate income. So, um, I mean, we have overcrowding. There's seems to be, you know, just, you guys got an A plus on the making homes for, you know, those making over. Forgot what how much it is, but it's important that we that we offer, if, you know, options and address the needs of the people already living here and not, you know, so much effort into attracting people from out of town, congesting, you know, the highway. Um. Yeah, so that was all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Are there any other public comment? But uh six twenty one, close the public comment. And open it up to refining commission in the city council discussion.
Thank you. I have, I have several comments, but I'm gonna wait for others to make comment. Um, and then I'll make my comments in terms of um what was presented to us today and some of the existing issues that we have already in the housing and some of the policies that are included and are packed in and what those policies really do not do.
Well, to the chair, um, I do have a a clarifying question for Megan. And it was just, uh, when you give the introduction, you mentioned that there was more uh requirements this time around from the state. Were those the ones that Amy um brought up to us in her presentation? Or was there anything else that is critical that we should be aware of?
Um, no, I think Amy brought them up. The only other one, but it may not apply to solid X, I don't think we, our homeless population is um large enough, but I know that you also have to identify locations for shelters. Is that not applied to? You have to demonstrate that you have a shelter that would accommodate your time count.
We have done that analysis in the housing element and what you actually have to have is zoning that allows shelters, enough land that would allow shelters without a use permit. And you already do have that.
Yeah.
So, but that is in the constraints chapter.
Okay, so that was another thing that is new, but luckily for us, it's a small number in campus only.
Um, the other thing is that is there are more programs in response to state law, but there also is just more analysis required as part of the housing element. So uh like of the sites that are included, H C D wants a lot more information in some cases about the sites that are in the inventory. So that's also new, that wouldn't be in the programs.
Yeah. And um because of all of these requirements, I think the process is taking restrictions longer. So that's why we're gonna not need to uh December a thirty first timeline, which I don't think is unique to your loss that many cities are having that challenge because there are so many more requirements um than in previous years, including that kind of mandatory review by uh the the H G D, which is the Department of Housing and Community Office. Did that answer your question?
Um, yes, it did. It did. Thank you.
And I don't know if it, if, if it would be easier to go section by section um to take comments on each of the goals and the kind of, you know, um, or if we want to um pop around. Um, we could just go, you know, starting off with goal one.
I think that's a more organized way of handling it. Yeah.
Thank you. Yeah, and Megan and I have five minutes. I want, I don't know if there's any other comments that I want to make, but before we go with the goal section, if you want to make something like comments. If I can do that. Yeah, so, yeah, thank you. And I'll take a few before we go into that goal segment. Um, the goals. Um, so I think for me, it's looking at the plan. I want to say thank you for all the work that's been done. Um, but I also want to make sure this is not just a check the box exercise for us. It's something that we need to do as part of the plan. Um, the last housing element, if you saw some of the outcomes that we had, were very staggering in terms of not meeting the low and very low um units that we have. And again, we look at, I'm looking at the plan again, and a lot of what we're proposing is still some of, some of the similar ones. I know there's additional elements, uh, but some of the similar, um, you know, some of the similar policies and criterias that really haven't produced much of the need that we have based on the data and the demographics. Um, so we had uh three hundred and seventy six above moderate uh units higher. Uh, we had the higher than lower income units in the last cycle, and we only exceeded and that did not even meet our lower income units. Um, so for me, how do we ensure that the plan that we have here before us um that there is really realistic in terms of strategy, funding and policies that are going to help us to achieve um those lower income target units that we don't have and that we desperately need? The plan still continues to look at building more single family homes. And although we look at the report and the before is really clear in terms of the need for higher density housing, the more multifamily housing that we need to meet of our residents. Um, and based on the goal of the housing element, the purpose of it is to be able to identify current and projected housing needs and say those policies and programs to address those needs for everyone in our community. And that's the goal of the plan since and it seems to be set. And it seems to have been said inception in nineteen sixty-nine, so it really requires us to do that, to meet the need of everyone. In our community, we have not done that in the last couple of plans that we have. You know, I agree with the speaker here today is that we've done great in the above. The moderate and above moderate, we just have not really looked at those deeper. Uh target income, and and I understand why, obviously, they're more complex to be able to do, but I think the policies that we put in place have to be realistic in terms of. What has worked, what hasn't worked, and not identifying those things that we've identified in the past to continue to identify them. Because they haven't resulted in the inventories that we need, and if we're looking at some of the existing plans of, um I know it identify. Using the downtown specific plan and how we can get some more units there, I mean, we don't really have a lot of units. Um to be able to get there, so for me, it's, I know some of the discussions that we've had have been, how do we really provide more resources? Opportunities and realistic to be able to have more first time home buyer programs in the city of Solid Ed, we, you know, we have more. Home buyers and we have renters. But the data indicates that that's because we built more single family homes and we built multi-family homes. Um I know it talks about a housing trust fund, we've been talking about a housing trust fund for some time already as part of the council. How do we really make that a reality to see what that's gonna really get us to um produce a housing that we need? Um and establishing, I know we had established a division or a department to really address housing. Um and I know there's been turnover and we've had um different changes and and staff, but I know this was something that the council had said was important. Like we hired a housing development person or a housing coordinator because. We wanted to make sure that we really were addressing the housing needs of our community, so I think for me is looking at. Do we need the staffing, what else do we need in terms of capacity building, and to be able to really help us. Um. Identify how we can build and construct housing, not just plan for it, but really move forward in. Having some of those units come become reality, um.
It's also holding ourselves accountable, like you said, because you can, you, they, they seem like very good plans, but it doesn't seem like it, they were implemented, so. We're going to approve this and move forward with this general plan, and yeah, we do need to make sure that we are. Achieving our goals, how are we measuring it, and how are we holding our staff accountable to share that information and put it in front of us to say, hey, we aren't doing this?
Absolutely, so for me, I think some of the other things too that we look at is, you know, how do we support more homeownership opportunities, how do we address overcrowding? We have severe overcrowding, we're the second highest city in the county that has a severe overcrowding, and we've known that, it's not just something that happened. Couple of years from now, it's been in existence, so how do we really address those issues? Um and then the other thing I know that, I, I, I talked about the expectation of CTF population in terms of increasing. Um I thought some of that was decreasing, I know Abbott doesn't show that, but just looking at some of, you know, how that affects in terms of. What we're counting in the plan, um and we're looking to in the population growth that we have. You know, more people within the thirty to fifty-nine year that are older here in Solid Ed, and how are we really planning it? How does a plan really reflect that we're providing that housing also for our seniors to accommodate for that? Um because we haven't built senior housing, I think the only last senior housing we built was several decades ago. Um and the majority of the household that we have, we know there are five, five people per household, so we need the larger homes, and I don't think we built some of the larger homes. With larger bedrooms, so that's something that we've, we've seen before, and it's still part of what, what we're looking at. Um and we have, like I said, sixty-three percent of the renters and and compared to seventy-five percent. Um and it uh lower income multifamily homes versus the county percent um percentages, it's all that is eighteen percent. Versus a twenty-six percent in the county, and our older homes based on the data is, we really need to repair those, we have. Some of the identified parks like Nielsen's trailer park, Barcelona, um Buena Vista. I mean, these are parks that we've known, and areas that we've known that have needed repairs. Um and how do we address those issues in terms of some of the housing conditions and some of the infrastructure? We've had residents from Barcelona come before our council since. You know, several years ago, asking us, they wanna be annexed to the city, they wanna make sure. Um that they also have those opportunities, and I know that there's been a lot of complexities on that, but it's how do we ensure that. Those homes that are identified there are also being, um that we're really addressing some of their needs and their infrastructure. And again, just the overcrowding rates again, um and the, when you look at, um when you look at. The cost burden of our families. Um and over fifty-one percent of the families based on the data are cost burden. Um but yet, we're looking at some of the average price, the average price of a home is five hundred and ninety-eight thousand. And that has increased twenty-three percent since the last several years, and the, the three bedroom rental prices are two thousand four.
Excuse me, to the chair, I think maybe to have a more effective discussion, we should, you're giving a lot of good information, but I feel like it's a lot. Well, I don't know, we should like, maybe say some of the points you said were real good, maybe we could talk about those and then.
So I, I wanna share my, my points, because I think it's important, I wanna have a discussion, but I also wanna make sure. You know, I had the opportunity to really discuss some of the issues that, that I saw, that I wanna bring to the table. And when we talk about the policies, it's really understanding what some of the data is for me, and I think I, I have that authority, and I have that right to be able to.
Yeah, I think.
So I'm gonna, I'm gonna finish, if I can finish. I'm almost done, so if I can finish, so, um no, and.
We have a chair. We have a chair.
So, um. Just to remind everyone, we do have a time, time constraint, uh wanna do a hard stop at eight o'clock. I know you do have a lot of um points to make. Uh I think the council member makes a point that we could address these as we go through. Uh I'm trying to make notes on some of the things you're talking about. It's kinda hard to address them now, or when we go through those actual sections.
Through the chair, but if we're gonna uh end up at eight, I don't think that she's gonna be able to share her thoughts. Because we have like, what, seven? Different points tomorrow, so unless we hurry everything in ten minutes. Is an hour and a half.
To the chair, so I'm, I'm. If you wouldn't let me finish, I would have been finished in about a minute ago.
Go ahead.
So, thank you.
Go ahead.
So just, you know, include over fifty percent of our population here in Solid Ed is overpaying for our housing. And we, and the plan continues to perpetuate the same theme. And also, looking at the policies that we request that we're doing, that we're building concurrently are affordable housing, housing with our market rate, and that doesn't show. Especially not when we're looking into um the Mira Montes specific plan, that doesn't have that frontier, yeah, thank you, chair.
Moving on to, we were gonna say. Second one.
Yeah, I think if we, if we um. Took section by section and um. Kind of uh think about some of the. Areas that, yeah, so.
What page are we starting on?
Starting on one ninety-nine. Um. And we can, we can also broadly talk about some programs that we think are missing too, that may not fit into these sections. So there's an also other, and as ideas pop up, I think it's a good idea to just. You know, throw them out, especially anything specific. Um that would be helpful. Um so the first one um is, is about adequate sites. Um to ensure the provision of adequate sites that will allow for the development of a variety of affordable housing. Um in a safe and sustainable environment for all residents of the city of Solid Ed, consistent with the. City's um housing allocation adopted by the Association of Monterey Bay Area Governments, which is AMBAG. So, um. Each uh city in, in the AMBAG region was allocated a number of. And this is our housing target essentially, uh of units that we are to provide, and um. I don't know if you guys know the breakdown on, on the top of your head, but it's. Yeah, for the, for above, above moderate. I, I don't know if it was in the staff report. Oh, yeah. Um no, that's just what we're looking at, yeah, it's actually less than that, oh, here it is, I'm sorry. It's on each two, the staff report, so um our total number is seven hundred and twenty-four. Um the very low income, if you look at that stage, is a hundred. Um units, the low income is sixty-five, the moderate is one eighty-three, and above moderate is three seventy-six. So, alright, that, that's our total, and it kinda gives you the income range that you can kinda understand, and I think this is based on a. Family of four generally is what.
It is, yeah. So that's for them.
So.
That's updated every year.
This section of the plan has to essentially speak to this. Mina number, and we can exceed it, of course, um but that's essentially what that, the, the, uh what we have to plan for. And there's a couple of um different ways, um. One of the annexations that we do rely on is the um, is the Merameante specific plan. And the reason why we do that, we, we do need that territory, is we did do a pretty extensive. Looking infill, what infill sites we have available to provide housing, and even when we take a look at all of our infill opportunity sites. We're still gonna be deficient, so um. The, the Merameante specific plan is an important um annexation. Um in terms of the housing plan. Um council will, will be an affordable housing plan that would be adopted by council that can um dictate sort of. Um. In terms of an inclusionary housing, how do you fulfill that inclusionary housing requirement, and how that, um some of the concurrency um. Discussion that we're already having, I think, might, might help with some of that, but um. I, I don't know, Amy, if you wanna specifically talk about the, the annexation here. Um. In the adequate sites, how, how you guys went about that. Um one thing I will add is, is that we did um apply for and receive money from um AMBAG. To actually upzone um some sites ahead of the completion of the general plan. So we are gonna be identifying areas that we would upzone for affordable housing project, not for, not for market rate. And I don't know if um.
I'll just add that in that program, one point, one point, one. Um it doesn't rely on all of the units in the Merameante plan, because we are charged by the state with. Demonstrating what units are likely to develop by twenty thirty-one, so that's the number that. We worked with staff to come up with for this program.
Megan, I know that you, you know, it's been a number of years that there hasn't been, um. You know, specific housing for farm workers, specific housing for the elderly. Um we're talking about senior housing, um one of the pieces that's, that's been missing since two thousand and ten has been the redevelopment, the redevelopment piece. Uh no funds from redevelopment, and that normally in the past had been the tool that cities utilized for. Um, you know, working on some of those uh, those issues, because, you know, you'd work with a nonprofit. Use redevelopment dollars to look at home funds, to look at uh CERNA funds, to look at just a variety of different funds that were out there. Um and I think one of the topics that the city council has talked about for a number of years, there's been various different, different things that we've talked about. Um I know we approached at one point, uh some of the farmers uh to see about taxing themselves uh per box. A penny, two pennies, to see if that could be some way that we can bring a housing trust fund. Uh I know that there is that housing trust fund that we've been talking about, and I think we need to sit down and find out what mechanisms we can use to, to create that here for, for our community. Because we don't have that redevelopment dollar that we used to have, um so we've gotta come up with a different tool in order for us to have. Funding that can match, uh cause you know, there are grants out there, and once in a while, we may get a grant here and there that, that could happen, um and. Uh we've, we've just gotta figure out how to do that piece to it, because I think uh without that, we're gonna have a hard time. To fill not, not just arena numbers, but really the need of our, our, our community, which we haven't been able to do the. The housing for seniors and the housing for farm workers or folks that are in the lower income brackets. Um and I think that's, I think that piece for us, I think we've gotta figure out that piece.
Yeah, that's, that might be a great thing to put into the housing element if people pick her, there's an opportunity with. The Salinas Valley.
Right.
To work together, because obviously, um Salinas, all the way to King City, is providing housing for farm workers, both. Permanent and temporary, and although there's been, I think, a lot of progress for the migrant workforce, there hasn't been for the.
Families.
Families, so that's actually something we could, if people think that's a good. Policy or program to add, I can't guarantee it, but the cities can work together to explore and to reach out to the ag. Um agricultural community about, can we look at some type of. Uh thing that's incorporated into the sales that comes back in the jurisdictions and in the form of a trust.
Through the, through the chair, yeah, um totally agree with that, that's part of the agricultural business itself is. That to assist in that, that obligation, and when we hear about the billion dollar industry, activism that's going on and stuff, and. Doesn't trickle down, down to uh those that are providing the labor, bringing that, that product to the table, and therefore, we have not only us as leaders of this community. But also the county to provide that type of housing to, to fill that need. So, yeah, I definitely have for that.
Oh, Megan. To the chair, um have, has um council or anybody here, has been here previous, gone to. To speak with Napa about what they did, that's a wonderful program, you know, and looking at that program, um. I'm a, a member alumni, I'm a response organizer for local equality, and we went and visited, and you know, we sat and really learned about what they did in the. The farm collaborative, and it was just wonderful to go see, you know, um the program, La Seda, where they were teaching people how to cook. And you know, be able to come up out of the fields, you know, uh working in collaboration with the wineries and the vinters. Teaching people how to become vinters, how to own the land, how to, you know, run the land, there was just a lot of different stuff, and then I was extremely impressed. With the collaborative and how they came together to build this beautiful center.
Health center.
Right, the health center that um just has, you know, great services for everybody, if you walk in there, it's like walking into the, the Monterey. If you haven't been, it, it, um, it's a typical type of thing to provide services for our people who, you know. Do the heavy lifting, or not just our area, but for the world, actually, so. You know, looking at that, I think is very.
To the chair, what will it take, or what kind of effort would it take for it to incorporate this into the house? Cause you, you mentioned that you, we could try, but uh.
Well, I think that what the city's role is, um is to work with. Um the other jurisdictions to uh collaborate with. The ag businesses, and if we go as a group, we're a lot more likely to be successful, and the good news is that the mayors and city managers. Um I think there's pretty strong collaboration amongst Salinas Valley cities, so I think. And I think it's actually, there was a regional um farm worker housing action plan, and I believe it was in the action plan. So it would be consistent and Solid Ed um contributed to. Uh that's, it's the Salinas, Salinas and Papalo Valley um farm worker housing um study and action plan.
And that's referenced in the document as well, yeah, so it is in the document.
Program three point one three has a couple of the elements that you've just been discussing, so we. Sorry, I'm not sure how I'm supposed to, like, if we're running the meet, meeting, how I'm supposed to interact, so just tell me if I.
Is, would it be easier for you, for Amy to kinda facilitate this, not to take it away from you?
Well, I wasn't necessarily requesting that, but um I will do my best, uh. I just wanted to, to make sure everyone saw the program that's already in the draft, and if you have comments on that program, that would be really helpful, like. What is missing um from that program, because it does talk about reaching out to the employers, seeking funding. And seeking partnerships with other jurisdictions, and then the study that was just mentioned, and quite a few other things.
I think, I think what we're missing is, is whether the employers um were contacted, I mean, putting that, that. Should be contacted, of have you, how we actually contact them. Have you, have we actually contacted them or or have you, have we heard from them in any way? Because Megan mentioned that city managers and mayors um, are pretty much in agreement, but. There is a third component, which is the the ag business. And if we can have some um, something. We can have any communication that having established with them. Or if not, then what we, what we need to start uh, doing that communication, who who should I start that communication with them?
That goes to my question. Alejandro, you mentioned that they have to respond to me before. What does that look like?
Uh, well, we're done with the redevelopment.
Yeah, yeah.
Uh, well, Megan may might be able to speak to that a little bit better.
Yeah, just for housing.
No, no, no.
Now, but this nice thing about redevelopment, um, that. How that lost and now I think California is suffering, but under state law, at least twenty five percent of the redevelopment funds had to go into affordable housing. And it was, you know, I don't know specifically what it was for solid out, but. Um, it was billions upon billions of dollars that was going to affordable housing. So you're right, it was. By, but I worked for the redevelopment agency in Los Angeles, and it was by far the um, biggest producer of affordable housing was was redevelopment. Ones. And in L A, it was, they chose to do thirty five percent. So when that went away, it just. We got the key.
Yeah, the 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 projects that were done, the last project that I can remember here that was done with redevelopment dollars. I was probably the chief by housing over here in San Vicente, probably the last project that was done with redevelopment dollars. I think that was any. I want to say that was around two thousand six, two thousand seven, and then there were some other projects that were about to move forward when the market crashed. And so they paused on those projects and they were coming back on those projects when redevelopment was taken away.
And there was, there was kind of a threat for a year, but um, it was dismantled and um. At the end of twenty eleven, I believe, um, it's been the court case, um. And then it slowly dismantled in twenty twelve, twenty thirteen, so quick. We're still unwinding some things.
And and through the chair, just really quickly, in regards to the Napa and there's Napa and Santa Rosa, they both have this housing trust fund. They also have this uh, community health center in Napa uh, where the farmers uh, tax themselves uh, for. Uh, the health center and for some housing uh, that they've done. Uh, and it's it's been a great partnership. And I know that. In the past, we've tried and but there's new leadership now at the county level as well at the at the as the mayor level. And so I think it's time to to see if we can go back and and to answer a little bit about, Fernando was asking if. Farmers had been approached or the ag industry had been approached. Uh, they were approached several times. There was. Two large contingencies of folks that tried to approach various farmers um, from throughout the valley. Um, and initially, the conversation seemed like, yes, they were at least open to the conversation. Uh, and then it just kind of. Kind of feathered away. And then they tried again to do this again. Um, and they brought in consultants to try to help through the process to try to see if we can get to the table. And it 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 went nowhere the second time. Um, but I think, you know, we have. Uh, new county leaders, we have new folks um, that are mayors, and I think it's time to try to see if we can bring this back again.
And I think it's a little different to what you're talking about than what you have, Amy. Yeah, all right.
So Amy, can we go back and keep through the chair? Just if we're going to go back and look at, I know those other elements are another port portions of the golden policy, but I do want to address one point one. I do have a question specific to that until we move on to the next item. And that's in terms of that annexation. And I just really want more transparency and clarity in the document. In terms of how we're going to meet, how the Merameante project with that annexation is really going to meet. Um, that criteria, those lower income units, given that this is a major plan. And the project is in phases. And um, from the last, I, as Megan said, we still have to do the development agreements. But I, it doesn't reflect here like when that is going to take place. And talking about. You know, the policy in terms of concurrent, um, that was one of my issues that the housing makes the. Market rate and affordable housing isn't going to be developed concurrently. So in what phases and in one timeframe are we going to get those units? Because if we're counting them as part of the eight. Year cycle here, when are those actually coming in? I just want that to be very. Clear and transparent in our policies because it doesn't, it doesn't give us um. Some of that criteria because the project's going to be based, so I'm on one point one, one point one one.
It is in there, it's written somewhere twenty thirty five or thirty one.
I think what Anna is asking for is a date, you know, I mean, like a timeframe.
Yeah, let me be clear. What I'm asking for is the annexation is counted in the policies in multiple times, but I just want it to be very clear and transparent. If we're going to count those units. This is only a late year um, plan. What, in what year of the plan are we going to meet that criteria for those units, given that the project is not. Is not going to be built concurrently, affordable and market rate. I guess that's why I just want to make sure that that's clear because it's not. I didn't, I didn't find that.
So what she doesn't want is that those uh, low income um. Properties are built on the eighth year. It needs to be spelled out, and I agree.
I understand. I can't really speak to the to that myself, but I can see those notes down.
So I I think um, council had a first reading of an ordinance that would require concurrency. We are coming back. Um. With a a tweak to it to allow um, nonprofit partnership, but it would. Um, depending on council's action would require concurrency with the, so that it might be addressed shortly. Depending on how council acts on that that issue.
So Megan, just for me, I just want that to be clear in the document.
Yeah, we can make that.
Meeting it, it's not, wow, we're going to meet that, but when is that going to happen?
We can make that correction as soon as um, city council acts on that. Because we had, we had the first reading. Um, and we could even reflect that this is in the works. Um, it's um, it's actually going to come to you on the fourth. On that little tweak. So.
So through through the chair, um. I know one of the uh, requirements was um. To show a plan for development for any city-owned sites. So I was just uh, wondering how many sites does the city have? For, because um, when it comes to um, I guess land that we can develop or that the state would want us to provide a plan for development.
Yeah, I can appreciate that, and so the city owns um, currently for development. Uh, the Front Street parcels were currently vacant and as well as those butchered vessels on. Oh, it's National Road. Um, that site is so industrial, so it doesn't allow a lot of residential uses. Um. The Front Street parcels, as you know, there's projects that are coming up in Container Village and because of the. Distance between the railroad, it might not be the most adequate site for housing.
So it just be those two. What about up by like where the range is that? I thought that was also city property.
It is city property. Um. I think it's zoned on open space, though something like that would.
Yeah, it might have environmental.
Yeah.
Um, challenges. Um, we have actually identified.
Um, I'm sorry, is that because of the landfill that used to be there before? It, so was the landfill in the whole area? Because I heard it was just contained to a very small area, but I mean, it might still be within.
Yeah, and then the cost of bringing the infrastructure there, it would be the um, probably cost prohibitive, like. Um, we did, I'll, for full transparency, we did um, suggest that placeworks consider some sites that may have some controversy. Um, but are probably not fully developed to their full capacity that the city owns. And that would be um, the. Lions Club site. Um, with the idea that maybe the Lions Club could have offices or their services on the ground floor, we can build up. Um, and we also looked at the um, the Historic Society sites. And I have, um, I told Greg that, hey, you know. We we want to, we could incorporate them into the project, but that that it may make sense to like, because we have to look at all sites that are. Um, is owned appropriately and, you know, close to services. Um, and I don't know if there was any other sites in addition to that.
I think. No, I was going to ask that. I think I saw that I mentioned uh, Front Street. Where exactly in Front Street do we have sites?
So we have, uh, we have uh, where the shipping container village is located. Uh, we have two parcels there that the city owns. Uh, one of the parcels is being considered for the shipping container village.
Mm hmm.
Um, the other parcel, um, don't have a plan yet. Being um, or waiting on that. And then we own where the Gateway Center is at with the Park and Right Lots. Um, those are the ones.
On the chair.
And then we. So I mean, just, so are we just going around? I'm just a clarification, if we're going to go through the different policies, we want to go through the different policies so that way we know which is the next one. So right now, we're in the then, so it's uh, are we at now one point, two point one? And then.
Yeah, so yeah, I think it's if anyone wants to speak about. The other policies under goal one and programs.
It's still under goal one.
Yeah, I mean, we can note that the concern with the annexation is concurrency and making sure that. Um, so maybe we can tighten that up to make sure that. It it's clear that we're we're not. Going to ship, and you would be in trouble anyhow with um, the state if we did that, but we, then we don't have an intent. We we don't have the intention of shifting all the affordable housing requirements to the end of the project.
And it's already mentioned in programs two point one one and five point one one. So if the city wants to. Add it to one point one one as well, that would be consistent with those.
So question, um, this is something that Brian had brought us before he left um, his position here. He had mentioned that um, if there's any way we could tap the state for um, prison land, you know, they have a lot of land. If they decide to vacate one of the prisons, which is up in here right now, one of them. If we could ask them to donate the land to the city of Solid Ed so we can build up there. And I don't know if this is where it would go, you know, it would be something that we could add or pursue.
Um, we could, the challenge I think we would have potentially is a one of fair housing. Because if you're putting your affordable housing. Development next to the prison outside of town, not near services. So we, I think. We have to think about. If we, to be consistent with their housing, we need affordable housing that's.
Within.
Yeah, that's access to it granted, virtue stores and the like. So um. There may be some opportunities um. As part of the general plan to look at some of those industrial properties, because we do have, where we do have. Land is some of that underutilized industrial and whether or not. Some, because they're ironically, they're actually close to some services. So, you know, whether or not those sites are appropriate, that could be in something, it could be swapped. Yeah.
They had nine hundred and thirty two acres up there. That was before the second prison was built and the other ones had problems with the soil itself. So that was some of the issues why they didn't build and they built poorly.
Well, they're. We're saying this valley is that, okay. And they're all connected already to the wastewater and services, right?
Yeah.
So, I mean, it does have all of that, at least um. That we sort of out in it.
I mean, we could, we could, we could add an exploration of that. I don't know if. If this state would consider it as anything on the horizon, because when we're.
We're gonna have, yeah, have to be some pretty certain, certain information about a timeframe.
But that's, that's okay, because we can do more. We can add in, it won't count towards our required inventory.
Right.
But we could, I I think that's a good idea.
We, because we do have low income um, housing right next to C T F, the Campora apartment. So. Um, you know, we can't take that because it isn't out there and it isn't an option. It is. I would like to ask that, you know, that we have that as an exploration.
And also, as Megan said, in the general plan, which has a much longer horizon, it might make sense to explore it there. Um, because you have. Things that go beyond housing, which would be needed in that area. That's another idea.
I was going to bring up in the Campora one, I know I had heard from some of the residents a couple of years ago when the, when the power went out for like three or four days. They were complaining that they had no water. I think it it was. Hooked up to the electrical, maybe an electrical water pump or something. So I don't know if that's something to, just to keep in mind. Um, that when the electricity goes off, then you have them out there without electricity and without water, without flushing toilets.
Yeah. Yes, and maybe they, I don't think they're hooked up to, well, at least water they are, so yeah.
I'm sorry, but I have to go. I know I had let Darlene and Megan before.
Is there, because you have to leave, is there anything quickly that you?
Um, I think to me, I I honestly, a lot of the stuff that the mayor brought up, I'm, you know, in agreement with, and it it's important to me, which is housing for seniors, for our youth. Um, our families, our young professionals, people with disabilities. Um, and I think we just need to, you know, start thinking outside of of the box because it is a crisis that we're having. So, yeah, and working with um. Developers, it seems now, um, I notice more affordable housing developers like Chief Spider Housing um, seem to be aware that we have. Uh, for-profit developers that need their help and are wanting to work. Um, so I think we just need to. Maybe then um, provide a a platform, whether it's a town hall, workshop, a mix or something, once we get our our housing staff. All all said, um, I think it's important for us to initiate those conversations if if they're not doing that unless themselves, because we're the ones. Responsible for our residents having housing.
Yeah, yeah. Um, even if I made through the chair, I wanted to um. Like formulate what I'm hearing into some goals for consideration, if that's okay. Um, Amy, I think what um, this group is specifically talking about is a little bit more specific, which is. Working with the cities on the funding side, seeking some type of tax, self-tax or contribution. From ag providers based on per box that could go into a trust fund. So I think that's a little bit different than just kind of generically looking for funding. Um, and then um. Also, just um, tapping onto council member um, Corlejo. Um, I think what she was suggesting is that um, he um, and I can't remember. I've I've read the housing element, but sometimes it blends with um, Salinas. Uh, but having a developer forum to proactively identify uh, housing developers who would be willing to come into Solid Ed. And I don't know if we have anything like that, but I think I think it was in Salinas's housing element, and I know they they didn't do it. And it was actually highly successful.
Thank you. Through the chair, I I'd like to talk also about under program one point two point two specific plans in terms of high density. I don't know if I saw it, but we know that obviously where we have been capped at certain amount of densities, no more than two. Um, and in some instances, we can go three, but I think now that we have acquired uh. A ladder truck, which is one of the challenges that um, prevented us from going higher density housing. That we really included this part of um, the. To be able to be transparent is higher density housing, and now the city can allow from higher than three, than more than three stories. And obviously, it's going to be where it needs to be, but then we really identify that moving forward in this housing element, which. It couldn't happen in the last, but obviously within the eight-year timeframe, that can happen since we should be acquiring the truck next year.
Yeah, so maybe um, I don't know, Amy, the the height limitation, maybe not just density, but. Um, I, we have a three-story height limitation. Right now, it's two. Oh, wow, that's really problematic. You wouldn't be able to do anything. Um, so. You know, most um, housing projects are three to five stories. So the five stories might not be, you know, great everywhere, but maybe that's something we should explore.
Would, uh, through the chair, would it be possible to introduce um, some sort of a condition? That if we get the um, the truck before the development starts, we can, we change that into building up and something like that.
Um, we probably, we probably have to do it as part of the general plan and then. Change the zone zoning to do it, but we could um, do that analysis in the general plan um. In order to do it. And unfortunately, probably that will take longer than the effort truck, but. Um, you could also look at with our refunding, some targeted. Uh, zone change that may increase the height maybe in the downtown.
Because that will increase the possibilities for developers.
Yeah, make it more affordable. So I.
So I thought I had talked about it the last time we were doing the amendment to the housing element and the base and they were. We panicked, why couldn't we include it in some of the densities here?
You can include it, it the um the the program to follow would be to upzone through the general plan to allow the. Yeah.
So there have been some zoning amendments that have been brought forward to increase the densities, but I don't believe the heights. Were increased recently, so.
No, we have, I don't think we have, we've talked about it, but.
And and we might, the good thing is we have some funding to do some zone change work ahead of the. Um, general plan, so we can maybe identify where the higher um heights would be and do it. You know, now, I think we shouldn't start. But we can add that to the high element, I think it's a good.
Well, then we through the chair, that way also with the downtown, you said that we have a couple of empty lots that are privately owned and. Possibly that's where we have that mix of residential business on the bottom, create some residency downtown. In addition, if it's the with housing developments, to ensure that it's not like. When that one went up in Gilroy, it was, whoa, that's huge. And it kind of stood out, but with the coloring and with the paint and stuff, it kind of blended in community, but yeah.
Yeah.
It's a good idea, start finding some more affordable uh units.
Moving off on the specific plan. Move on to water and city one point two three.
Thank you, through the chair, you know, I do have on that, I don't know. I know that there's obviously been a lot of water conservation, we obviously doing really good at receiving now funding to be able to build a purple pipe. Now throughout the city, but I think uh making sure that there's more elements of just. More of the energy efficient landscape, water conservation. Uh, more, and and I don't know, Amy, if it's part of the design build in terms of the uh. Mean construction, but to really make sure that that's part of any future development moving forward to have that. Drop tolerant landscape and all of that, so that way it's pretty clear in terms of what we require under our housing element.
Move on to the one point two four, use of sites in previous cycles, uh mentioned something about. That were.
Sorry, what did?
The uh use of site from previous cycles, those two units that were. On previous cycles.
I did we, I don't think we noted which how many sites tonight, but that that may be what is in the element.
Any comment on that section? Uh, two point one housing variety.
So is this based, the charges based on their share, so do you got the percentages, Amy, based on what we have for our minimums?
Sorry, where are you looking?
On the two point one on page two two.
One second, so just to answer your question on the previous program, there are eighty-eight units on sites like that. That are subject to that program. So I'm not sure how many sites the eighty-eight units are on, but I could find that if you're interested, um so on housing variety. Um.
Yeah, it's based on our.
Based on the beliefs, yeah. Yeah, sorry, which is trying to read the policy.
Okay, yeah, thank you for that clarification, and those are minimums, right? So we have to meet that, but we can exceed that, obviously, based on the.
Yeah, it's a minimum objective to have enough land zoned for. Those numbers.
And I will say that um we're doing, e- e- even though I know we're failing on the lower ones, that's clearly a focus. We are actually doing well even on the moderate income, which is is hard, that's a hard. Um, actually, income category to meet, so who knows, that's one good thing. I know, cause in the jurisdiction, we can't. Fail on that and actually doing pretty good on the others.
Moving on to two point one one, any comments on the inclusionary housing section? Two point one two, mixed use in commercial zones.
We have this, so we have a section from the end of our contract briefing. That is commercial, uh we need um. Uh, on a specific plan for the type of commercial um. Or can we do mix right there uh the bottom, like I've seen in other cities, they have businesses in the bottom and.
For where, I'm saying.
For the business area and um over there by grocery. Is that possible?
Um, it's not zoned for that. Yeah.
Do we have any? Any place that is zoned for that?
Yeah.
Longfront Street, the Longfront Street.
But we only have two lots, right?
Uh, for city old lots, but there there the tighter section will be zoned.
How far down does it go on the side streets?
Um, all the way down to Oak.
But doesn't, no, oh, sorry. Does it go up to Monterey, let's go.
Monterey, yeah, here's the commercial retail, um commercial residential. So maybe an effort toward that, you know, we during the outreach that we done, not only for the housing element, except for the general plan. Uh, a lot of the community is in favor of mixed use zone, yeah. Therefore, it gives you the opportunity to have businesses on the bottom residential and maybe I'm working for this general plan. It's uh an. An ability for us to consider rezoning and increasing our mixture of used zoning areas and making it um accommodating that feature for. Housing and.
So just for an example, there's a house for sale or a lot for sale, I think it's in. Next to, almost close to uh Windy Acres, so will that zone be considered that? Will that be a consideration for?
Typically.
Business in the bottom line.
Yeah, yeah, typically, some of them, uh there is a few spot zones uh on that area, just because uh some. Property was there before our zoning code was implemented, but uh we can definitely provide for the information.
I think there's a good opportunity to 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 look at areas that over time um. May convert, where you could hide higher density, and I think thinking about those streets. Like even in SNL, it's, you know, there's a lot of actually, you know, things that could come down and. Perhaps that that's an area where you could build some density and the nice thing is just. Hitting some of those side streets that wrap around front, everything is highly walkable, you're right there by the major. Transportation stop at West and Front and so thinking about that is an opportunity.
Yeah, through the chair, um Megan on that, um, cause I know we identified the downtown specific plan and some of the um. You know, some of the available land, but I know some of the other units that we have that the city owns, I mean, obviously, housing hasn't been something that's been. Considered because of the train tracks that are in the. Yeah, so Front Street, I mean, so I guess what I wanna see is realistically, how many? How how many of those 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 lots are real realistic to be able to to redevelop? Right, because we can say, hey, we can do all this, but in reality, how many of those lots do we either control? Or do we have the ability to purchase, or how many of those are conducive to be able to have mixed use?
Yeah, I would say that the the lots on Front Street are not conducive to residential, they will probably do very well in a tax credit application. Could be the proximity to the freeway and to the rail railroad, but the property, any properties. And we could put that as a program, the side, those little, this from pond to Monterey, those side streets would be actually. Very great for housing, because they're away from that and they're walkable.
Um, on the other side of the train track, who owns that on the other side? Between the the train track and the freeway.
Um, no. We can't know that some of it's privately owned.
Yeah, so uh across the freeways owned by Union Pacific, um farther up Front Street closer to the north. And exit, um we owned where the pond is currently located. Um, but we obviously have to think about transportation and circulation inside. Um, and going through the Union Pacific property as well.
Yeah, so can we revise, so I mean, let me just finish my, um, so can we revise that? Because it says downtown specific plan and if that's not really, how far can we add other uh portions of the city or?
I think what we're, so the downtown specific plan focuses on Front Street all the way to Monterey Street. So specifically focusing on Front Street itself, yeah, so there's a specific area.
One thing we could add is that maybe the city could target. Available properties or underutilized properties for acquisition.
Yeah.
In the downtown.
And then our.
But I constantly heard that it's not buildable, so why would you purchase something if it's not buildable?
Oh, we're talking about the, yeah, not not on front, but across the street along this like side street, like along Main. Solidad, Kidder.
Yeah, and then our REAP application, um and we can forward this information after this meeting, but in our REAP obligation. We highlighted the downtown specific area and then the vacant sites that we're considering for the housing element to kind of know. There are vacant sites within the downtown specific fund of that specific policy.
Hmm, so through the chair, um that site, the those apartments right there, right by the gas station, um. Those little place I believe was owned by Modesto. From that one all the way to the car lot, that's all Southern Pacific. Um. Who owns that empty lot?
Uh huh. The, I think the behind the apartments, that's where our, that's our property.
Right.
And then um probably halfway or not the beginning of the car lot, that is on Union Pacific all the way down.
Yeah, I thought we owned that, does he own the 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 lot next to the, to the car there?
The one behind, yeah, I don't know.
No, not the other side, but on this side, next, yeah.
Oh, from my understanding, it's owned by uh someone.
Can we entertain having a conversation with Union Pacific to see what they have for those um plan for those lots out in that area? Um, been there for a long time, maybe they're never gonna be developable or they're never gonna sell them, I mean, at least so we we know.
Yeah, we we could ask, um housing, um those present probably challenging for them for our housing, but. For other uses, yeah.
It is so commercial, so it also.
Through the chair, one of the spots that kind of stands out for me is that, you know, where the. I don't remember which ninety-nine cents, one of the, one of the uh.
Right adjacent to the bakery there?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
I've only heard, I've only heard, um so yeah, the that empty spot, I mean, I think that's a one ideal spot that. You know, what we're talking about, you know, building up, I mean, I think that. Whoever it is.
He wants to develop it, but yeah, we do, we would love that spot, cause it would be perfect.
Yeah.
The the two, then like, you know.
The one in between the two.
The old bakery, the old bakery.
Yeah, yeah.
We can continue conversations, but.
We will.
That's one of the founding members.
I remember that old bakery.
Okay, um, actually, to move this along a little faster instead of going through each um section. In order, uh if anyone has any. Comments on any of the sections. I'll open it up to, I mean, again, in order to point one three and on.
I had a couple questions for Amy through the chair, um. Uh, one thing, good news, we do have our housing manager handfuls out at the street, so we will be hiring a. Housing person at a higher level than what we had before, so hopefully that will bring some. Uh, you know, um capacity at the city, but do do um cities ever put staffing? Um, as a need or a focus? Into their housing elements for the cities to invest in. Um, staffing's help.
I've seen it in a program, yeah, is that what you mean?
Yeah, yeah, so to address kind of what the mayor was suggesting, that for the city to invest in housing. Staff and. Build build that capacity. I'm just trying to move us along with some of the suggestions into programs, if that's helpful.
Yeah, so Megan, just to the chairman, in terms of the promoted incentivized development, I know you talked about the fall for developers. Um, so that probably would, um, cause I know we said Chief Spah and there's obviously several, but I think it's really important to be able to extend. Out of just the Monterey County, Tri-County area, because we've seen that there's been a really, you know, it's it's difficult, right? And so we don't have a lot and. Chief Spah and some of the other Eden Housing and some of the other developers have been really tied up in other projects that they have, but I think for me, it's really looking and expanding. Kind of our outside of the tribe with the the. Tri-County area to be able to look at, I know there was a lot of resources that you identified in the back from Fresno. I don't know if I wanna go that far, but they do have some really good self-help housing and others that are. Um, habitat of humanity, Fresno area also that are doing a lot of um building of single-family homes, but I think it's just really making sure that. We're not just looking at as those developers that we have here that we traditionally use. For affordable housing, but really making sure that we're expanding um our territory for um. Developers and I know, Megan, when I was with the city, I know that we have like Chief Spah part under the home program. I guess I just wanna also be realistic of the programs that we do have to fund for affordable housing, because city VG. Is we're not an entitlement city, so we don't get them, you know, directly and we have to be competitive with that at the state level. The home dollars, we don't get those home dollars, cause we're not an entitlement either, so I think it's just, you know, for me, I really wanna see the plan. That has more realistic sources of funding that we can potentially use, not just all of these funding that are available, but. How can we really work with developers also to say, hey, this is a source of funding? If you get it, especially the federal dollars, you can be, you know, you can be classified as a community housing development. Was it showed over the community housing development organization and then they have all these different incentives, right? Is there something that, I don't know if the city, if we can ever, you know, be an entitlement community, I don't think so, because it's based on formula, but. How else can we utilize those dollars instead of just putting them there and say they're there, while they're there, I know they're there, but we never, we've never. Received, I mean, we never will, so just being more realistic about. How we can support the help with our developers and what dollars are really available for us.
Is that part of the job description that you're trying to hire for?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Identify funding sources.
That could go, if we add a program, that could be, make sure to mention.
Yeah, cause we should probably clarify that we're not an entitlement jurisdiction, so we can compete for those dollars at the state level. But it is a competition, yeah.
I have a question regarding uh two point one four with the ADUs. I think earlier I read that the three homes that were were uh recently built by Chief Spah, including ADU, is that correct?
Yeah, they do.
Is that something that we could also consider, that new construction comes within ADU? And would that help with our goal?
We can use our part, part of that, can we, can we require the developments to include ADUs, Megan, as part of the. Furthering fair housing or furthering housing? We could probably have a um a set of floor on minimum densities, but I don't know if we can actually specifically say you have to have a review. Um, we can encourage or um recommend. Um, that be incorporated into the design and just as a, a lot of the um. Housing developers are actually doing it anyhow, they have, they're um. You know, having, working before I came here on some tentative maps, they were actually. Um, the ADs were by right in the subdivision development and they were actually um building. Um, ADU plans because they they had a lot of class, because people, you know, have their parents or. Kids live with them, so it's becoming more popular, but I don't know if we can mandate it, I don't know.
I think we can encourage it for sure.
You can encourage it, but what about in the um. So if we can encourage it, but can we incentivize it through, I mean, I don't know if they get density bonus or if there's others to say, look, if you build. They want to give you an incentive and that more incentives to be able to.
We 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 could, um, we have the incentive, um. We, we, we could, um, we have the incentive, um. Uh, from state law that you can't do development impact fees, um, if it's seven hundred fifty square feet or less. Um, but we could look at incentives.
I'm sorry, um, you know, just, just to give you some, uh, maybe some resources, I know Clovis had, uh. Had issues with China to me, their density issues for low-income housing, I've lived in San Juan Valley for over twenty five years, so. Um, I was involved in a lot of this, so one of the things that they ended up doing was, um. Did it force A D U's? What they did is they were built into the plans, so. Most people who bought um the low-income homes, um, usually bought that extra unit. Some of the units were separate, some of the units were actually connected. Um, and the reason I know this is too because my, my cousin bought one, so the A D U was attached to the outside, still included the garage. You know, still, yeah, I, yeah, I was shocked too, still through the garage had a, you know, what they were calling the mother-in-law units at the time. So they were building a lot of them and some of them were very nice, I mean, I, I couldn't believe. You know, how well they were built, so it wasn't. It, it, you know, everything was included, it was, you know, for a senior to live in most, more than likely, you know, and. So it had the, you know, mini kitchen, it had the bathroom and, you know, some of them were as big as kind of two micro bedrooms, most of them were one. But um, it added to the ability to increase housing and it still maintained, um. The neighborhoods, right? I think that's the big thing for them, you know, that it was a big thing, so.
It was, it was basically similar to what I think, uh, what Sandy was saying, I think one of the um places that we could take a look at and I, and I wouldn't follow that exact model. But I think Greenfield and King City, uh, the Creaking Bridge Homes, they did, you know, I would eliminate the alleyways, but, you know. Just looking at some of the stuff and, and, and trying to figure out how that could possibly be a way of encouraging. You know, the, the, or, you know, what used to be called the granny unit or the, you know, and so on and so forth. Uh, but that, that could be a possibility of encouragement and, and, and maybe uh looking at it in a different way so that we can. Have a way that families could have their, their, you know, their family with them um in the same.
I think that's something that could be brought up to the master plan, right? As far as like the design of the house. Because I know for my top, I would love to buy like a, sorry, sorry.
It's okay. Two comments, first, let's. Let's bring back the alleys, I love the alleys, but that's my question. The second is, I noticed that we have some, um, right there we have that, the city has developed some, uh. Um, pre-approved plans, right? So I was thinking that even, even if, if they don't, if we're not able to accommodate for that. Maybe extending the services lines like the plumbing, the electricity outside, because that is, that is. Part of the investment and that is something that there will be cost, um, highly costly later. So if we, if we extend those services underground and then um helping with the plants, which uh, that helps a lot with the planning. That it reduces the cost for the people that are there that will probably rebuild that E D A D U's. And that will be more encouraging for people to buy those houses. We, I don't think that we can impose that to everything, but we can create a zone or a.
We can, I think we can encourage and we can even look at some incentives through the tentative map process. Um, for um. You know, developers that incorporate. Um, granny or A D U's into the process.
What is the difference between those, that the A D U plans that the city has and the ones promoting, uh, promoting, um. From the Monterey County, because I, I, I saw.
So two things, one, um. I agree with Alejandro, giving them the option. To, um. Encourage the developers to create an A D U, Greenfield does have a really good. Community or development out there, where they do have in the back, they have detached garages and on the top they have the A D U part of it, right? King City Nina Homes, and I know this because my son's looking over there, they do also have the um A D U in the back as well as an option. And but the lot obviously is bigger and what have you, um, but it is an additional cost. So that was one thing, right? Just, those are really good ideas, encourage the developers to do that with um. Their development, the second part of it was. Um, on the A D U's, I know that there's people with a lot of property, especially up there, and I don't know that the people up there in what they call Chole Hills. Um, they have over, you know, two acres or so um in their lot and they have nothing back there, people, you know, can we consider subdividing the parcel? No, it's not?
No.
Okay, I was gonna say, because that's, I mean, a lot of good use of the land and so people just had it, just. Yeah, just the comment in terms of, um, I know the Chispa homes that they build with the A D U, they still have the garage, so you still have the garage and then they have. Um, it's actually a really nice layout because they have the garage and then you have to come into the site, they built a little area walkway where you come through the back. And then it's a really nice, I mean, it's actually was pretty spacious than what I had thought about. So that's a really good model to look at because they're not massive, right? They're pretty, I mean, they built them in a very. And dense kind of um footplant, but they still look really nice and spacious and that they don't look really crowded. So I think that would be a, a great model to even look at what the cost of that. Um, what that would cost to build and then to, to replicate for plans.
Sorry, I slipped over you, did you? Um, I think everybody kind of discovered, uh, what I kind of had to stop, um, I think also by having a detached garage, the model targeting that. Uh, during the master plan, the quality of life, right, of people that are living on, in these A D U's. I think it's a big difference between living in a detached garage, like you mentioned in Greenfield. Than sharing a wall in the garage as we're seeing around the community.
And through the chair, one, one last comment, a- and I know, I think Megan, you kind of touched on it. It is just making certain that we have, uh, that they understand the, you know, the, the difference of one way of in some, in that incentivizing it. Would be about the seven fifty square feet, under the seven fifty square feet, where you don't pay the impact fees and then under four ninety-nine. And under where you don't have to pay the school impact fees either.
The option of having the additional units, of course, property is going to be more expensive.
Yeah.
Uh, which will be, that's actually a greenup, but to go additional unit will be lower in second, correct? Yeah, kind of win, but um, so that's the perfect idea that, you know, if they. Choose the option, but don't build the unit, now we build one spot and not the other, but if they have that incentive of not having to pay those certain fees. Build the unit, now we've got.
Well, we can maybe look at, um, some type of fee, uh, incentive, like maybe you don't. Because they'll, at the end of the day, if you had it built into, they're only going to pay for the single-family home, they won't have to pay for the A D U. But you could reduce the impact fees of the uh, single-family homes slightly as an incentive to build the A D U. So there, there could be things to pull.
And that's a little out of order, I'm going to tell you, you're going to order, but kind of going back to governmental constraints, um. Let's say that here that. State laws require the housing owners to address. And where appropriate and legally possible, remove government token constraints to maintenance, improvement and development of housing. Uh, what can the city do? As far as, I mean, you can talk about incentives or certain fees or taxes.
That was an example that Megan just said.
Yes.
Yeah.
Reducing government impact fees, unfortunately, permit fees are one thing that, um. We can't, um. We can't just out because I can't charge you more. To pay for your service, but that's one thing that's a little bit harder to do unless the city, um, contributed. Via the general fund to that and probably can't afford to do that right now, but. But we can play a little bit more with impact fees, it still works the city because we won't have as much to do. Streets and, and parks and stuff, but it's a little less impactful than.
And I just found something that as far as the A D U's are concerned, I, Megan, we have mentioned, I have mentioned to you the. There is funding available up to forty thousand dollars through the Calpa. That home, homeowners can apply for, um, and there's an H N S land that I'm aware of that does actually help our. Current residents to apply. Um, and they can get forty thousand dollars for an A D U for the cost to build an A D U and they would cover infrastructure, so.
What is whole?
It's through Calpa. The A L F A. Is that all, um, dot gov, it can go on the website?
Do you want to go through, do a search of Calpa, um. A D U, correct? And there, it might be, um, another program that is probably helpful is to. Um, have staff who can support people who need A, A D U financing. Um, to. A walk through the process and identify funding sources.
We can, we can connect and I connected with this person and, and because I was curious about it and I know that for all of that. We've received a lot of applications in the last two to three years. So this is something that we as staff can look into in getting the information, so that way our residents, because one of the questions that they have is like. Well, how much is it going to cost? Um, and all of that, you know, fees and Ariana knows more about that, but this is information that we can be have ready for them. Right, yeah, and I was asking that in if there's any preferred builders, contractors, what have you, so. Having more information on A D U's would be helpful for people, here's all of the information, financing options, because. And people think, okay, I could go get a home loan and they don't understand the different types of loans, the interest, everything and then, you know, being prepared to do something like that. To buy a home, let alone an A D U, so, um, yeah, thank you very much for that information and it would be helpful for, you know, people to have it as well and to share. Um, and one thing on the A D U's, I did look on the site and uh, some of the links are not working, if you can take a look at those sites. Uh, and those links and make sure that. The information helps us.
Another question I had about A D U's, uh, they covered the low-income portion of the arena. But the city can't monitor, once they're built. Then the homeowner may charge double the rent, triple.
That's true. It is for, um, the purposes of the housing element, but one thing that we could add as a program is that the city could, um. Provide some type of financial support. And, um, actually income restrict those units.
So Megan, in the city, we used to have, um, got enough you can do, if you could provide income support and restrict the units and you also do. You do an annual, um, the certification process to make sure that those units are indeed. Um, being that the people living in there are income qualified, right? So that way they still maintain those units, um, for that specific set, set aside.
Would that potentially, uh, discourage someone from building an A D U? There, there, there are many people are building it as an investment and if you're restricting.
Well, we would, we would provide funding and in exchange, like, let's say, you don't have the money to. Let's say an average A D U is a hundred thousand dollars, the city could provide funding. And then in exchange, you would restrict it for a certain period of time. And there's creative ways of doing it too, then another thing is, um, looking at rental subsidies is important. On the rental side of the equation.
Another idea I've heard is allowing in your zoning that someone can build. To an extra A D U on their property if they income, if they do the deed restriction.
When you talk about finance, I mean, um, for money, is, is a financing or is a grant? For the A D U's?
Um, it, it, it can be a lot, uh, well, the Cal F H A is. Linked to income. Yeah, so it, yeah, I. More information on that.
It is something that, you know, I think I find very interesting, I think we get that question a lot at the cost and it's. You know, a lot of our residents are interested, so, um, I suggest they get everything, there is a website, you can read the whole information, but. That person directly works with that whole program.
Like, another thing that perhaps, um, the city could. A little bit on, in, in city attorney. But the city could play a little bit of a matchmaker between people who have vouchers and people who have A D U's. Because, um, the nice thing is, there's a lot of people who have these section eight vouchers and they can't find units. But, um, they pay you as the owner of the A D U would get, um. The, the market rate value of their rent. And so, you know, we could help, you know, work with the housing authority and renters to kind of facilitate. A match.
So kind of having a list of the, of the A D U's available or something.
Yeah.
Yeah, and to piggyback on that, what I had just, um, heard on my, on social media was that, um, those housing vouchers. And I don't know if this is sure not, I haven't, uh, researched this, but that you can use those housing vouchers towards mortgage payments now. To buy homes, I don't know, I mean, if that's something that.
The, um, housing authority is actually looking at that, I don't know if it is, and maybe in some communities it is, but I. Happened to be in conversation with, um. The new executive director and she wanted to do this type of program that she did in Alabama, which is.
And actually, that's where I, was from these, because where I heard it from and that's why I was like, oh, interesting.
So, um, but yeah, I, I did say that I would be interested in seeing if we can have a partnership here because. I think in South County, although. Um, rent, I mean, fine is becoming out of reach for, for a lot of people, if you had that kind of subsidy. You could bring it in, it's still going to be a lot more affordable here to buy a house with that. As a kind of a leverage than if you went, you know, to San Diego, so obviously under peninsula, so there might be an opportunity.
I'm thinking about those houses that we were talking about before that, um, some people apply for the, the housing and. They end up not getting the house because they couldn't sell it before. Uh, so if, um, can, is it possible to match those vouchers to those, those houses if it, if, if it comes to that?
Through the chair, I know you, I'm talking four point three, four point eight point two housing vouchers, so it does. I mean, it does, talk about the housing vouchers, they're talking, I'm looking, uh, working with the housing authority for those vouchers, so can we extend? Extend on that then, uh, in terms of what, the, I, I guess for me, I just, I'm sorry, but you look at some of this language and I know that it's. I mean, I just wanted to really be more realistic, right? So you're saying, you know, we're, we're going to do this and. Can we expand, Megan, in terms of really adding more information is, what are some of the current opportunities to look at those housing vouchers and? Being able to look at not just for rental, but also potential for homeownership and what does that entail?
Yeah, we, we would have to work with the housing authority, but we can, um, definitely put. It, it's, you know, reach out to the housing authority to, um. You know, explore the development of a program in Solidad that would, um, allow, uh, section eight. Vouchers fees for homeownership opportunity.
And, you know, and I don't know if we could do this, but it would be for, you know, people from Solidad and it's not, you know, would it be a program who could to everyone? Because then we're going to bring in low income.
Yeah, it's a little hard, um, because of fair housing rules, um, but that's another thing, um. Although this maybe each of you would rub the wrong way, we could say, um, when we're looking at housing. Programs have a preference for people who live or work in Solidad.
So we've done that before already with some of the, um, lottery programs that we've had. For, so I know that there was language that was added there because we wanted to make sure it was specifically Solidad residents. So there had to be, I mean, as long as they lived here, right, and they worked or lived here, so I think it was like. But we've done that in some of the, the, um.
I think it's different for rental versus ownership is my understanding.
Yeah. Yeah, I don't kind of remember what project, I just want to go back before then, because I know it's seven forty-six already. Uh, we didn't, I know we talked a lot about A D U's and A D U's obviously are going to be assessed, so what's going to help us? I just don't want to lose sight that A D U's, not everyone's going to want to live in an A D U and from the data that we found. And the data that's been provided, you know, people are looking for first-time home buyer opportunities, people are looking to live in a house. Um, you know, we just haven't, you know, we need to be able to build housing that is affordable, so under some of the other criteria. Under some of the other criteria that we talk about affordability and making sure that. Um, we have, we talk about the mortgage, mortgage credit certificate program, first time home buyer funding. Um, that we're really looking at what's in the language there to make sure that it's realistic. Um, and I know Megan, you cited the farm worker housing program and it is on three point one three, but I just want, don't want to do sight that. Um, how do we really work to bring those programs and those step funding here? And I think the other thing that we've heard before and it's in the here as well is. You know, there's a lot of, with a lot of our population that we have, some of them don't have credit. And, you know, some of the restrictions that we put on some of the units have been really difficult and we can see that with Las Viviendas, so. What can we, how can we structure that where there's still some affordability restrictions that still meet some of the state criteria or funding criteria, but. That doesn't become so burdensome with the people that need it. And then how do we institute programs that are going to be ongoing to be able to ensure that our, our first time home buyer p- program? Or, or our individuals that want to buy a house can build up to that credit. Right, maybe they don't have it now, but what programs and incentives can we put in place to make sure that? Um, we're preparing for that and that, uh, we've talked about coordination with other, and other entities and um. Throughout Monterey County that would help. You know, to be able to do that, um, there's agencies that do that. How do we make sure that we're really prioritizing that? Because we've seen that, you know, based on the data that we have in front of us in the housing element. Um, that is one of the, the challenges for many of our residents, so how do we support them to really be able to become homeowners?
Through the chair, yeah, that was one of the ones for me uh, that highlighted was the first time home buyers and, and one of the things that's not spelled out in this uh. In our objectives is how many we want to attempt to help or try to help and how much is that going to end up uh. Costing and is it feasible for us to do that and what type of uh, uh, funding mechanism must, must we utilize or what's available to us? To uh, start this program, because you know, these are the ones for our young adults, our young professionals, uh, new, new uh. New couples coming into the community and then besides, you know, the teacher housing and those type of areas, but. Give them an opportunity uh, to, to end up, you know, owning a home and those that are able to afford one and maybe um, you know. By that incentive, you're able to uh, get into a home, so I know we don't have any uh, any numbers on there and um. What do we need to do and how would we? You know, I, I see some of the funding agencies listed there, you know, they're talking about uh, us and then uh, uh, C D B G. Um, program as well. Are, are those out there now or any of that available?
Yeah, and it should say that we're looking at spending our successor agency funding to um. Acquire uh, low income housing units, so I don't know if that one point two million.
Will be there.
Maybe, may not be there, um. But I think you're right, we need to identify um, well, building profit sources of funding. Um, C D B G home, um, home is also, I think you can use home for first. Times. Home buyers, you can. We do actually have home funding um, that. May be an appropriate source versus um, those others. It's not a lot, we have about roughly about two hundred thousand, but.
Megan, but the state doesn't have home funds, that's federal funds, so how do we have?
We, I don't know how, but we have home program income roughly at two hundred thousand. That we could put towards that.
Well, isn't that part of the chair again, um, we have lobbyists out there that we, we're paying some money out there and some of our lobbyists will look for.
Yeah.
What we were looking for and, you know, we, we haven't got a report back from them yet either, but um, it'd be interesting to see what's out there and what they're.
First time home buyer funding is a challenge, I'll be, it admittedly, so sometimes you can turn around with banks. That will put some funding into it, so.
You know, it's probably out of our scope, but um, I remember going to uh. One of the conferences for the planning commission for them. And um, they were talking about, and I know we're kind of behind the eight ball with our county, but I know that they had a. Uh, changed what the low income level was based on the cost of the homes, the cost of living in each area. And so it really raised that ceiling for low income because even most people like myself, I'm single. I can't buy a home, all I can do is rent. Okay, so if you have a lot of single people who are coming in, we've got that housing that we have for teachers, you know, and they're thinking, well. You know, I'm going to save money living in teacher housing, but they're paying most of their rent to, to us in the city, to the schools. Okay, you know, how are we going to help people like that, right? Because we're considered, you know, that semi moderate, but we still don't meet. We don't still meet the criteria to buy a home, so, you know, I understand low income. But low income now no longer is what it used to be. And the builders are, are, are not gonna drop their rates, they're asking for more money and incentives, so what we're talking about is. Trying to find money to help people do this, however, I think the bigger picture is looking at. You were just talking about, you know, advocacy at the state level, you know, or at the county level and looking. What are our income rates, what's the cost of living here, you know, don't just throw Solidad into this one little thing that, you know, oh. It's cheaper to live in Solidad or Greenfield or King City, you know, when I started looking to try and buy a home from experience. I was told, well, you're not going to be able to afford anything from a Solidad down. So you need to start looking at, you know, uh, Greenfield, King City, you know, uh, and further down into more of the rural areas, right? And so, how can we mitigate that? And looking at that, that was a huge conversation, it was a shock to me when they were talking about it because the cost of living is so high. So it's not just for, you know, a lot of the people, my, my family were field workers, right? They've come up, I'm first generation, so I, I get what those living. Accommodation look like, my grandfather lived in at Murphy's Crossing, which is, was the worst labor camp, it was on stilts. So I understand what people go through, right? But at the same time, it's like, it's not just, you know, Los Campesinos, it's people like me who work hard every day. Try to, you know, purchase and even sometimes people who are married, they still can't meet that threshold. So, you know, I think we have to not just address what other programs are there, but when we look at them, what are going to be the thresholds for those programs? You know? And, and, and then also then, who do we take for advocacy at the county level and the state level to look at? What is our threshold for what's considered low income now? Okay, because we're not looking at it, other places are, and that really up the ability for people to purchase homes up in the north and south bay.
I think a variable that's really not discussed here is the market, right? So if you bought and uh, you got a loan a couple of years ago, uh, you were lucky enough to lock in a rate of like three percent and now it's a, I think like seven percent. And how that affects the buying power for even the moderate income um, and so forth.
Yeah, and so that was one um, thought about a program and again, I mean, it's stretching my economy. Um, but um, explore um, explore the, the city um, subsidizing um, interest rates. So that you could borrow from the city at a three percent interest versus. A seven percent interest, I think there have been some jurisdictions that have done that. Don't really can afford to.
One second, so uh, then I'm running short on time, I just want to go around the room, give everybody at least a minute to give your closing comments. We'll start with the commissioner, sorry, uh, council member Chavez.
Before I, I do that, if, if it's okay, just, the, I just wanted to ask a question to Megan in regards to the um, home funds. Do you know where those, those are coming from?
Um, I think it's program income, Tencia might have a better sense of it.
People have to pay off their loans.
So we can reinvest them there.
Okay.
So it's good, we have money through there.
Okay. Um, you know, I, I, for, for my closing thoughts, I think for me, um, I think. I, I, I think this is good overall, the housing unit, but I think uh, the housing element, but I think, you know, there are some small details in there to um, kind of. You know, figure out and add a little bit more to it. I, I noticed that some of the numbers uh, I didn't make sense to me in, in some of the, the tables, uh, when we were looking at some of the county numbers at the beginning. Uh, when, when I added them up, they came up to a hundred and three percent versus a hundred percent, so I was trying to figure out like. Some of the numbers are some, something's wrong or the, you know, whatever, I mean, it's not, not a huge deal, but. Uh, uh, I think, so for me, I, I just want to see. Everything that we talked about today, I think the mayor brought up some really good points, I think. Um, folks here talked a lot about the ADUs and I think there's a lot of things that we can look at to try to concentrate on how we can. Uh, assist those moderate income houses, I know we've done well in that area, but it is, uh, you know, that percentages of the, of. Of what is happening with mortgages is, is really up right now, we don't know where that will go, but I think. We've really missed the mark in the last uh, twenty years of the low income and the very low income. And so we've got to figure it out and I know that without the redevelopment dollars that are not there, we've got to be creative and so how can we be creative? I think it's looking at a trust fund, uh, talking to our ag uh, employers. Uh, and really looking at how they can help solve some of this crisis because right now it all falls on the cities. Um, to go out and find resources from the state, from the federal government. But the majority of the low paying jobs for the most part comes from our ag industry, even though it's a multi billion dollar industry. So we've got to turn to them and we've got to figure out how we can add pressure so that some of those funds come back to. Solve some of these issues that are plaguing our, our cities, uh, because it's not fair for our farm workers who are out there working. Uh, and their families, um, and other individuals such as teachers that are out there doing, you know, the daily work and they're not able to afford a home. So we've got to figure out how we can be creative and look at incentives for developers, but also bring in other partners and I think. But I think that is one of the keys that we've got to figure out.
All right, so um, thank you very much for putting this together, the housing element, all of this information was very, you know, um. It wasn't eye opening, but it was, you know, all in place, we've got the stats, the data to support um, the need for low income housing. Um, we definitely need to make sure that we do have, we look at it all, the variables and financing. Um, the, the needs, I mean, we do have Las Viviendas, people are not interested, why aren't they interested? What is it that they're interested in and, you know, the individuals that are in the low income bracket and qualify, why aren't they interested in what we need to provide? Um, but I think most importantly, accountability as we move forward and implement uh, this plan is. Who's tracking, uh, whether or not we're meeting our um, requirements here of our housing element? Um, and, you know, periodically taking a look at you, well.
We, we are required to do it, an annual report. Um, so the city is mandated to track it and report it in the public. They probably, we could do better job of letting folks know what that is.
Yeah, because I mean, how did we get to this point if we were tracking it and why haven't we solved it, you know? You know, how did you get to this at this point, I guess is what I'm questioning and I'm a new commissioner, so I'm trying to understand how, and why not?
Does the APR, do you take it to the planning commission to end it?
You'll take it to council.
That, that was probably a good idea, I don't know if that, if you take it to the um, planning commission and.
But Megan, we have to make any reports for a while because that wasn't happening, so we weren't getting those updates. And that's why I'm saying accountability across the board, right? We shouldn't get to a meeting like this and say all of a sudden, okay, we failed in this area, we should have already known, it shouldn't be a surprise.
Yeah, and that's maybe something, and I don't know if we reflect in the housing element, but um, as a point of my. Experience, you take it to the planning mission and the council. And we can do that, maybe. Any, wanted to.
Thank you, all right, and that's it.
Councilman, council member.
Well, um, for me, uh, when we talk about housing and the possibilities of people buying a house. Um, it always comes back to how are these people going to pay their, their mortgages? And yes, we have to put an emphasis in how to find, how to make um, deals with the developers, developments. Developers and also find help like, what do you, what was the name, Calca? Calpa, I, I remember somebody telling me about this organization called NACA. Um, that also helps uh, in financing and yes, we can do this, but it still remains, how are they going to pay? And I think that besides that, we also have to, to be able to, or we also have to make an effort to. To start recognizing um, the need for a different uh, industry. You know, because we know that um. The agriculture industry will not pay now to, for them to keep up with the payments. So we have to bring more, more um, um, a different um, industry, different uh, job opportunities for our people. So they can, they can finance their own homes and they can have more opportunities, because it's not just buying the house. How are you going to come up with those four thousand dollars every month? You know, so, so yes, we can initiate the, the, the way for people to, to get into the house. But then they, they still have to keep up with those four thousand dollars, if they're earning four thousand dollars a month. So they're not going to be able to do it. So it's not just um, getting into it, it's maintaining the home, maintaining the, the couple meaning.
Um, just I appreciate everybody's input, you know, um, it was, it was a, a, um. Interesting to find out that we hadn't gotten the information about the reports ahead of time, so that would have been a, a good thing, but. We're moving forward, positive, new people, new changes, that's a good thing. Um, but I think for me, just looking at, at the housing element across the board is that, um. One, we have to look at the baby boomers, right? The amount of seniors that are coming in, um, right now, our population is dropping, not, not in our area, a little. We do so much sea attrition in certain neighborhoods, right? But looking at, at properties, maybe of people who do not have uh, children, et cetera. You know, looking at also the inclusivity of addressing the seniors, um, you know, which are low income usually. And then looking at our disabled populations, which are definitely low income and, you know, um, looking at those. Types of opportunities to help them, uh, whether it's incentivized, you know, work with different programs that we're talking about. So that the city is not carrying the entire burden of trying to get people housed, right? Housing is so important for us, right? So just looking at those pieces, I'm thinking, you know, what is that looking like for us? If we're looking at baby boomers, we're looking at, you know, what's uh, coming in for our children, what's coming in for the youngsters? And then really looking and targeting for that and then, you know, run off additions that. Kind of monitoring the trends forward to determine what is going to be in the best interest of this city as we grow. We, we can only grow so much and so looking at that, looking at those density pieces for us. To ensure that we're not also building little mini, any, any inner urban situations for ourselves. But that it becomes a very inclusive and safe environment for everybody, that's my brief thing.
Um, can I ask you a question, uh, just because I'm trying to capture the program? Um, how's, how is sharing opportunities, facilitating, is that what you're kind of alluding to? Um, where, you know, like if you're a senior, you could, and you have a space bigger than what you need, you could rent to someone who, it, you know.
Okay, we're doing that in Monterey.
Yeah, and I know there's a, there's an organization that specifically does that. Oh, there's one in Monterey too, like, it's called Big Home.
On something, they connect them, yeah.
There's one actually, there's a program in Monterey County and one of our vistas actually used it and for the, and I can't remember.
Our mayor used it in San Luis.
Yeah, yeah, th- thank you, so I, I, I mean, I, I think for me, I, I, I've been. I've been saying this in terms of about the housing element, so I appreciate um. Josie, your comments, but I know for me, I mean, it's been several years now where I have been looking at the housing element and because. That's some of my background, um, but I have been saying we have not been needing these numbers, we have not been producing the housing that we need. And so I'm glad that the discussion here now is people are, are understanding that, that we have had years that we haven't. We're here now, but I think for me, this is why the conversation of looking at a plan and making sure it's not a checkbox, that we're really being realistic. About what we can do and what we can't do anymore and how are we going to pursue to really ensure that? We're looking at um, housing for all in our community and especially those that we haven't built for, which is our lower income households. But in terms of the definition of low income, I mean, that comes from HUD, that comes from the state and we, I, I think one of the things that Sandy have mentioned is. You know, that, that's change, that's change and now most of the people that are into working households, you know.
You know, that that's change, that's change. And now most of the people that are into working households, you know. Fall under that category and it's looking at, I don't know how realistic it is. Um, Megan, but really working with the state to see how do we change some of those categories, right? Because we have more people that fall under those categories and, you know, I read in the report that people were saying, hey. They say I have this much money, but I still can't qualify for anything. And so really having those honest conversations at the county and state level to say. At the federal level, these dollars that are being provided are meeting, they're not meeting the needs of our people because we need to change the definitions. Um, I just wanna also also say um, that in terms of legislation. Um, there is gonna be a, there is gonna be an initiative in the ballot and that's um, Senator Eggman's bill. And I can't remember the name of the bill right now, but I think it is important that all of us become aware. Of what's happening at the legislation level and not that we just rely on others to do it for us. Um, but there is gonna be a housing production bill and because the state is not gonna ever give us the money that we need. The state's never gonna have sufficient money for us to to build and produce housing. Um, so hopefully with this bond that um, is gonna be on the November ballot, that we really take a look at it and and really share, you know. Um, what what's that's gonna do and how we can really benefit from having extra dollars to be able to provide housing to our community. Um, and then just of the policy, the other thing, Megan, I know we didn't talk about it, but there is already criteria now on us to be able to take a look at. Um, and to produce the white paper and it talks about, I know we talked about some of those policies here, but the policy recommendations in terms of. How do we really make sure that we're um, supporting and and making sure that we're developing housing? And some of them we have talked about, but they're specific in terms of streamlining permitting and reducing discretionary reviews. Increase allowable densities, we want impact fees, increasing funding sources of affordable housing. I know we talked a lot about that. And then optimizing inclusionary housing ordinances. So we're really looking at, are they really giving us what we need? Because we're not producing that. Um, and then for me, it's also looking at, we have an aging population based on some of the data. And so how do we really make sure that we plan for some of that senior housing as well? Um, and my last comment on that is just, um. I know there was correspondence in regards to the um, to the F the. The. The, oh, can't even do. Need I want the specific plan that came in to the to the land trust? And I just wanna make sure some of those issues were addressed because it talks about. Some of that being not applicable to this cycle, but to the cycle before. So I just wanna make sure that doesn't, I wanna make sure that. Yeah, we have to, we're gonna actually have to respond as part of our submission to the. Um, I'm October sixth, and we'll we'll be responding to that. Um, to comment, I think um. There may be some. It's understanding that, but we'll we'll um, work on that response and. From one thing, um, just going back to the aging, uh, because I'm trying to like turn these into programs. But one idea for um, senior housing is, um, I know other jurisdictions have um, actually employed um. Additional density bonus uh, for senior housing because usually seniors, they don't need the same. They're smaller units, they don't have the same parking needs and everything like that. So there might be a way that we can um. You know, increase it hundred percent or, because it with a state law density, it's eighty percent. Just a thought.
Yes, uh, I'll make mine quick. Um, you know, first off, I'd like to thank staff for putting uh, putting this together, the housing element plan. And Ariana, Amy, and your group, uh, Megan, of course, um. I mean, with anything for us to achieve this, this very complex issue, we have to have a plan. And for the plan to be in place so we can start, we talked about checking out boxes. But checking out boxes would be a good thing if we're meeting those goals. If we're not, then totally agree. It's it's not good. But yeah, we go from low income housing to seniors, to moderate housing, um, looking for housing for young adults, um. Um, utilizing first time buyers. I mean, there's a lot of a lot of possibilities, but maintaining and ensuring that staff is. Um, staying the course and meeting these objectives and these goals is extremely important. And then we do get a report on that, not only to us, but also the planning commission as well. So we're all on the same page because, you know, you guys, you guys see it first. And um, you know, you doing a very important job for us, the planning commissioners. I mean, sometimes, you know, it seems that we take you for granted and please, in my perspective, you're not taking for granted. I appreciate you guys and what you do. And ladies as well. The other thing too is, um, we talk about employment and and I've said this before and I dropped this up a long time ago is. That attracting businesses here that are also gonna be able to employ our young adults, employ our professionals. So that they stay here and they're able to afford a home, um, and looking at those. And not everybody's education, you know. Um, lot of, lot of ways to get out of poverty is through education, but the other thing is another type of education is vocational. Training and working with the schools that we have in place, working with Hartmouth College, bringing in those type of vocational. Training for our people, that's what they do, they're good with their hands. And I have good friends that are, you know, to do that where I'll cut my fingers off or do something wrong. But uh, that's what they do. So being able to bring those those type of employment to help support the housing needs that we have. And to continue to have a plan in place and to move along and you have an annual report on it, so um. The last one would be talking to the farm bureau. You know, getting ahold of them and and talking to them. So I I know they've done stuff with county, but what can they do with South County now? What can we do together? How how can, you know, these are your workers. And you can't say, well, thank you so much. At the end of the day, here's your check for you bought. Because now they have to go sleep and and raise their families and go to school. So talking to farm bureau as well and seeing what we can do collaboratively or what they can offer as well to uh, to help us address these issues.
Thank you. Commissioner Diaz. Okay, so I'll keep it brief also, so. So it's my understanding, there's currently three thousand nine hundred and eighty seven uh, dwelling units here on in town. So the idea of building seven hundred and twenty four, you know, and essentially uh, one fourth of the town. Uh, it's a daunting task, right? So it's a huge over. Uh, I think the master plan's gonna play a huge role in that and rethinking, reimagining uh, what we're used to. Um, a lot of the ideas were thrown out earlier as far as building up. Um, using retail mixed home to address the other need, which is. Shopping and and uh, retail for the rest of the population that are living here. Um, the ADU development and design where the garage is detached. So I think those are all gonna be critical um, in getting to these goals. So beyond that, um, thank you uh, for putting this together. I just feel like we have to rethink what we've been doing. Uh, we're we're used to a traditional three bedroom, um, two bath home. And to realistically address some of these or to get to these goals. I don't know if that the homes are gonna look exactly the way we've been developing the people. So again, so so just reimagining um, how the town's gonna look. Um, for everybody, not just the the new houses that we're building, but also for everybody else that's here.
So Chair, I just wanted to um, piggyback on that. I think we need to do a better job. Of educating people about how they, and maybe this is a program of housing typologies because. And and housing finance, because I think people who don't have the income, um, still want. You know, a a single family detached home, but that there's no economic reality that that can make that happen. For someone who's very low or extremely low income. So we we need to like. I know, you know, in Selena's, they had to spend a lot of time showing these different models of, there are some options. And this is a lot better than living in, maybe not even a legally converted garage that doesn't even have the basic things. But you can live in a, you know, a nice two bedroom apartment complex and that, you know, that subsidize that you can afford. So I think, and also uh, people who want ownership, maybe it's a condo or a townhouse or something a little bit. Different because that's what people can afford. I think there's an education piece that probably needs to be. I'm glad you brought that up.
Absolutely. I think that's what I've been hearing is, you know, some people who did not choose to buy into las viviendas is they're looking for a. They're waiting for that simple family home. Um, with a car, a garage, three bedroom, two bath, because that's what they're investing in. They're not investing, but. Like you said, we have to be very realistic on what can you afford with your income and your future income.
Yeah.
Because if it hasn't grown, you know, grown, it doesn't mean you're gonna go from low income to high income from one day to the next. So. This is what you can do, so.
Amy, you think first?
Oh, just really related to the last two comments, I wanted to make sure that we noted that there is program three to one, which is. That kind of education that you're talking about. It also does have the housing choice voucher, homeownership. In there.
Okay.
Yeah.
You read it, but.
Yeah. Um, there's a lot in there, so.
Just going back a couple of things that um, I wanted to bring up to make sure it may be in there already. Um, housing preservation, protecting people from um, rental assistance is in there.
Sorry, protecting people from becoming homeless or like rental assistance. Providing. I believe so. I mean, uh, preservation is definitely in there.
And then um, I, in terms of um, code enforcement, um, I don't know if you touched. Or if we have an interest in a rental registry program or understanding a rental. That's just a question mark for you all.
That's what Selena's did, right? In terms of the rental registry.
Um, yeah, I worked in. Yeah, I've worked in different jurisdictions with that. It's helpful, but I don't know if that's a need here. Um, because there's a lot of. Rentals that are unknown, who who owns them, you know, we've had a few. Properties too right now and prob- uh, probate that we're having some challenges figuring out who's responsible, but I don't know. There's a an interest here, something to explore.
Yeah, I think the other thing, Megan, too, was I mean, I know it was in here, we talked about, but we didn't talk about rent control. I know there's a mandate in the state of ten percent. More than ten percent a year, but obviously that's not happening. So a lot of people, I've heard that, you know, like the rents. Increasing and they're, you know, they can't afford them, so. Explain that as well, yeah, maybe some education.
Sorry.
Anything from the setup? Okay, sorry, uh, went a little over than what I'd wanted, but I wanted to give everyone a chance to give their final comments. Um, I wanna thank you all for being here.
Cause you didn't get to say anything. Did you have any comment?
Uh, I usually stick to the end, uh, because usually the comments or questions I have get answered, uh, listening to you all. Um, but I do wanna thank you all for all the, the ideas and the comments. Uh, I know, I didn't write down a lot. Um, I would just encourage you guys, uh, the the ideas or the things that you've seen in other cities to. And to give her a little more help with that, so that, you know, that's a lot to go through for her. Um, and helping her out with, you know, maybe finding contact or something can help speed up this process, you know. You know, it's important with this quicker than we have been. Um. That's all I have. Um.
Can, yeah, can we get a copy of that?
You have any thoughts? I know this is a lot to digest. Just let Ariana or I or Tensia, either a- a- any of the three of us, and we can filter it through Amy. Um, if you like, oh, I wish I had said this program. Um, the um, comment period ends on uh, thirtieth, which is a Saturday. Um, so for anyone in the community, the general.
Just one, one quick question. Uh, the home preservation that you referred to, do we have anything? We used to have. Uh, the revolving uh, loan uh, program that used to exist where a lot of the homeowners here that. Needed to make some fixes, say the roof, say, um. You know, the front of the house, painting, you know, that used to be here and that was, you know. I think that was the program that existed as far as home preservation, because it was very low interest loans that were done by the city. It was a revolving loan that happened. Uh, we had council members that were part of that, you know, that would just review it with staff. To make sure that, you know, we, there was no favoritism happening, but it was just, you know, folks would apply, you take a look at it. It it it, everything looked fine, you moved forward with the with the loan that was really to try to preserve.
We have. And one thing, um, that I know. Is important is functional rehab, because um, depending on the funding source, sometimes if you do a rehabilitation. It kind of opens up the whole.
I know.
Can of worms. So what I did in another jurisdiction is focus on simple things that wouldn't. Trigger that, which would be like water heater repair, roofs and things that were lower scale. And then you could help a lot more people and then you wouldn't open up.
Yeah.
Yeah, for our project that was.
And and I'm not indicating that I want council members on there because we, I don't think we should. I think it's that at the staff level is more appropriate.
But we could, you know, maybe think about some different rehab programs like you're talking about. A loan fund is good because then. You know, grants, once you give them out, they're gone, but you can have a, you know.
A check and balance on the loan.
Yeah, and then you get the money coming back in some.
Program, I'm not sure if they still do, and what they did when I was there.
Yeah, they, they, yeah.
Thank you. Um, nothing else with that or, you know, during the meeting at eight twenty two.